Good afternoon. A call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 11th, and we'll start off, Madam City Clerk, with the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Counselor Crowson.
Present.
Counselor Dotick.
Present.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Here.
Acting Mayor Campbell.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Carlson.
Present.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
All present, thank you.
All right. The city of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The city of Lethbridge is also home to the Maitee Nation of Alberta. Shout out for recognitions to my far left, Counselor Dotick.
Well, I go, really first this time? You scare me. Okay, as many know, I'm a member of the Alberta Cancer Foundation. Again, I will say, this apparently is the only board that doesn't pay a stipend of any kind to its board members. And someone wrote this for me, so I'll read it as it is. "Excitement is building for a special funding announcement for the Jack-80 Cancer Center this Friday. I can't divulge all the details just yet, but I will say there is a historic donation being announced that showcases generosity of an incredible Lethbridge family and a recognition of the incredible care they received at the Jack-80. I hope many of you can attend." I'm in Europe, but that's why I can't attend. Okay, so that's gonna, it actually is an incredible donation that's coming, but I really would like to tell the amount, but I cannot. Okay, my second recognition is my good friends, the Chevilles, are calling it quits. And I'm so sorry, because every once in a while, they would allow me to come on stage and stumble and fumble my way through songs like Satisfaction and Wild Thing and Taking Care of Business. But, so I ask all the bands out there who are still playing, please consider me as a guitar option to jump on stage to make you guys look good. But seriously, the Chevilles have been around for so long, and they've been such an incredible band. Their music is so diverse, and people just dance to them. So, good luck in your future endeavors, Chevilles.
Thank you, Counselor Dotick. Counselor Campbell.
And amen to that as well, yeah. Great band. And the curling world will be not the same without them. They were at every curling function in the history of Canada. So, lots of, just a quick few things, since I'm on the Highway 3 Twinning Project Committee, I just wanted to acknowledge that there was a big groundbreaking ceremony that took place on the 31st of May. Forty-six-kilometer stretch of highway between Tabor and West of Burdette will be twinned, and that should be done by the summer of 2026. It's a long project, but it's, of course, Highway 3 is a prime east-west corridor between B C and Saskatchewan. Just want to make sure everyone knows that things are being done and things are happening. Also, a number of us attended the 80th anniversary of the D-Day invasion on June the 6th. Number of reefs were lain. It's a very poignant day that we should always, always, always remember. Martha Retreat Center had their grand opening of their food garden. A number of us were there as well, so sorry if I'm stealing your thunder. Shout out to Coordinator Diane Sim, who does a great job of putting all that together. And also, the Gutsy Walk for Crohn's and Colitis took place earlier this month. Passionate organizers, as with all of these organizations that put these things together, they raised about $15,000 for their walk, which goes to research and support services. Those are some of the things I wanted to acknowledge.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
I'm never sure if I'm supposed to push it or not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the bouquets that have been set already. I just want to ensure that folks know that Counselor Dotick's guest guitar playing in no way, shape, or form led to the demise of the Chevilles, I'm sure. But there was a petition going around. I wasn't able to attend, so I want to extend a thank you to Mayor Higgin for attending seniors' week wheelchair races. I hope you won. I'm sad I couldn't attend, because I would have given you a run for your money, because I know there was a barbecue at the end. So, I'm very fast where food is concerned. Also, the Allied Arts Council announced their Upside-Downtown Concert Series. If you've attended them in the past, you know how amazing they are. Check out the lineup. They're amazing series to attend. Also, on Saturday, I was pleased to volunteer at the Ladies Fest 8K Run. It was an event that promoted women's health, fitness, and wellbeing in our community. And if you'd permit me, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. City Manager, shout out to some of your staff, City Manager and Mr. Sanchez. I know that while we were there, everyone was talking about how amazing the city crews were to work with. We had had all that wind that sort of destroyed the pathways, and our city crews came out and removed all the dead trees and had everything perfect. They wanted me to pass on the appreciation of their help from Parks' Shale Blinko and from Traffic Control, Darren Haraga, amongst others. But those two were instrumental in making sure it went incredibly well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If you haven't had an opportunity to check it out yet, I certainly encourage you to pay a visit to Blanco Cantina's new rooftop patio. It opened this, actually, at the beginning of May. I had the opportunity to visit it when I attended last week's Chamber of Commerce's after-work social kickoff, and it's certainly a fantastic addition to our downtown core. I also attended Lethbridge Housing Authority's Community-Based Organization Report to the Community Open House event. The event was an opportunity to discuss LHA's achievements over this past year in homelessness service delivery and connect with communities, or members of the community. I would encourage members of council to connect with Lethbridge Housing Authority. They were distributing copies of their annual report, so certainly connect for a copy of that. It was fantastic to see the Saturday's Farmer's Market back up and running at the Agri-Food Hub, and the downtown Farmer's Market on Wednesdays is scheduled to start in July. This past weekend, I also attended the downtown Lethbridge Public Library's Reading with Royalty event. The Crossings Branch has another event coming up soon here. And Helen Schuler Nature Center hosted its annual nature play fest at Henderson Lake. Both events had fantastic turnout. And finally, a sure sign of summer, Henderson Lake Swimming Pool opened yesterday.
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel. Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, in addition to a couple of the things that my colleagues have indicated, on May the 29th, got up nice and early for the pancake breakfast hosted by the BRZ at Festival Square. It was really well-attended, and you had an opportunity to have one of those famous pancakes from Stampede's, like we always get, except they didn't have any bacon in there, but it was really good. On the 30th, I attended the fifth anniversary of the Watch program, as did the mayor. We attended it at Galt Gardens. And a special thank you to Ms. Kleisenger and her staff for ensuring that Galt Gardens was in pristine condition when everybody had an opportunity to have some burgers and spend some time with many of the members of the Watch program. Martha's Retreat Center, thank you, Mark, for bringing that forward. The Contemplative Garden is really quite something that has a personal touch for my wife and I, because we've known Diana for a number of years. And the new garden gives us an opportunity to pause and reflect on how we might utilize that type of space in other locations around the city. The 31st, the mayor and I attended the Crime Town Hall hosted by Common Sense Lethbridge. Both the mayor and I were provided with an opportunity to respond to a number of questions that were geared specifically towards the political perspective of crime and disorder in our downtown core. So, I thank the mayor for his attendance. His contribution made a big deal, a big difference, actually, to the folks that were in attendance. June 1st, the Galt Museum School of Nursing. I was asked to present words of appreciation and bring greetings from council to the Galt Museum School of Nursing. And interestingly enough, while I was standing there and talking with the president of the Alumni Association, I learned that she was the mother of my next-door neighbor. So, it turned out to be kind of an interesting event. It was great to see the gals there from going back into graduation classes, all the way back into the 1950s, and they were very proud of it. There is a new exhibit at the Galt Museum now that is a permanent exhibit about nursing in our city. Two last quick ones, the National Open Range Day, the mayor and I attended on behalf of council at the L.A. Fish and Wildlife Range down in the River Valley. They had a big barbecue. The mayor had an opportunity to vent some of his anxiety on the range, and it was actually, it's really well-attended. Lots of folks come from all over. I was intrigued by the number of new Canadians that were coming to the range and learning how to use a firearm. I think that is just interesting in how they became a part of the culture. And last but not least is June 6th, 1944, my father was on the beaches in Normandy. And he was a very important person in my life. I have been back to the beaches on Normandy twice, once with him at the 25th anniversary. And most recently, my wife and I did the tour of the battlefields through France, Belgium, and in Holland and into Germany last September. So, thanks, Mark, for attending, and Counselor Schmidt-Rempel was also there, as well as the mayor. And I think it was well-attended, and it was a good opportunity for us to reflect on the importance of the contributions that our soldiers made at that time. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope. Counselor Crowson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. First, a big shout out to Winston Churchill High School Bulldogs. The ASAA Tier 2 boys won the provincial rugby championship, while the Chinook Coyotes took silver in the Tier 1. So, congratulations to all of the students who were participating in those upcoming here. We should be providing pancakes on Friday to farmers, so it's Farmer's Day across Alberta on Friday. Nobody tell my dad, so he doesn't expect any breakfast or anything like that. Would be awesome. Yeah, in bed.
That's for a farmer, yeah.
Our neighbors across the street, the county, of course, are celebrating their 60th anniversary. And I had a couple of things come across my table. July 12th, they're holding something in Shaughnessy, and July 19th at McNelly. So, they'll be doing some celebrations for their 60th throughout July, so hopefully people will turn out for that. Here, locally in Lethbridge, this weekend is Neighbor Day. There's so much every single weekend, you can't get to them all. But Neighbor Day, quite a few of our neighborhood groups are hosting it in different ways, so make sure you get out and celebrate. We also, of course, have the Sixth Street Block Party coming up very quickly. And one of the things that we all recognize is there are so many groups in our community constantly doing things without any recognition. In late May, early June, our local group of the Friendship Force welcomed counterparts from Australia and helped tour them around Lethbridge and southern Alberta. I know the Australian group is now gone, but thank you to the Friendship Force for what they do, making those connections across. And thank you also to the BRZ for the Foodie Fest and the Beer and History Tour that took place end of May and beginning of June. And then, of course, coming up in the next little while here, June 21st, the Maitee flag raising is coming. Hopefully, people will put that into their calendars. We also have Pride Fest and the Pride Parade coming, and Indigenous Peoples Week. So, many things to go that are happening. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't just do a shout-out to Shannon Phillips, as she is retiring. When I decided to run, I sat down with many past and present women politicians of all parties and all groups. And I was welcomed into a group of people who were so generous with their time, who gave me advice. And I want to thank Shannon for everything she has done for our community over the years and wish her best as she moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowson. Counselor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick shout-out to, again, to the city's waste and recycling crew. On Saturday, June 1, they conducted their annual Household Hazardous Waste and Electronic Event at the Park Place Mall, where you could drop off batteries and electronics and paint cans. And I took the opportunity to fill my trunk with a few boxes. And the process took me, and I'm serious here, 45 seconds. It was very quick. And so, kudo to them. And they asked that Mark Campbell bring in his 8-track machine anytime. I wanted to add to the Rolling Stones, the Rolling Stones, the Chevilles, they're not known Rolling Stones. But they put Lethbridge on the map, you know, traveling east and west and crisscrossing this country for 25 years. And that's no easy accomplishment, considering rock and roll is a vicious game. I want to see if anybody got that one. So, cheers to the boys in the band. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Palladino. Counselor Parker?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for their comments here. Seniors Week, just so everyone knows, I did beat Minister Nudorf in that race, and it wasn't because there was barbecue at the end. It was legit. Also, thank you for the 80th anniversary of D-Day, for the comments there. And had the opportunity of attending the Army Cadets Ceremonial Review on Saturday, and then this evening I'll be going to the Air Cadet Ceremony Review. And just the dedication and the respect, as I saw these young men and young women go through that review, was seconded on something. I don't know, I guess I stood there and I thought there's, a comment came from one of the, one of the members that are speaking, that these young men and young women are definitely our future. And I know it's kind of a cliched term, but it's true. They are the future, and just, they're amazing individuals, and I'm looking forward to this evening's ceremony review for the Air Cadets. New Canadian event, so MP Harder and myself, MP Thomas and myself, gosh, it's only been how long, right? She was not with the Rolling Stones. So, MP Thomas and myself had a new Canadian event hosted here at City Hall with, I think it was just about 400 new Canadians. So, the reason we did this is the last few months, or few years, I should say, since COVID came in, when you got your citizenship, it was by Zoom, and it was a quick, very quick meeting. And I remember going down to the courthouse before, and what an incredible event that was. And so, we thought the majority of these new Canadians were missing out on that. And so, we got together, didn't know what the numbers were, and MP Thomas did an amazing job reaching out to all of those that, and her team, that went through this new, this new way since COVID first came. And so, there was, like I say, almost 400 that, to see the looks on their faces, as we were able to, you know, speak to them and talk to them about, and welcome them to, not only to Canada, but to Lethbridge, it was absolutely amazing, hearing some of their stories. And so, yeah, we hosted them here in City Hall. We had three different events. We thought it was going to be one, but we had three different events, because there were so many, we had to have the same thing three times. And of course, shout-out to Tim Hortons, which, of course, is a staple of Canada, and they had supported us with coffee and hot chocolate through the event. And so, what a great event that was. So, a shout-out to MP Thomas and her team, as well as those that have helped us here, volunteered at the city to make this event happen. And last but not least, I, yes, Rolling Stones have not retired. Just so we're aware of that, they're still touring. But a shout-out to our Alberta team, as well as they're not doing, well, they're not doing as well as we would hope that they would. However, two games out of seven, we will, we've heard that it's Oilers in six, and so when Reiko's gone on his holidays, I'll be looking forward to those wins. So, with that, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. And I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Campbell. Be resolved the agenda of the regular meeting of city council on June 11th, 2024, be adopted as presented. Is there anything, Madam City Clerk, to change?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. No amendments or revisions to today's agenda.
All right. Acting Mayor.
There are no additions. Call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. On the consent agenda, from Deputy Mayor Carlson, be resolved the minutes at the following meeting of city council be approved, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. City Council Meeting 2024-05-28, further be resolved that council receive for information the status of directed resolutions with the following amendment, that council defer the date of return of the LPS Technology Line of Credit Policy and Procedures item from the July 17th, 2024, meeting of the Audit Standing Policy Committee to an Audit Standing Policy Committee meeting in Q4 2024. Further be resolved, the city council approve the recommendations contained within the following Standing Policy Committee reports. Recommendation of Governance Standing Policy Committee, 2024 Civic Culture Plan, be resolved, the city council adopt the 2024 Civic Culture Plan as in Attachment 1 in Principle, as a guiding document to provide direction for the continued advancement of Lethbridge as a culturally diverse city. Direct administration also to develop a civic arts policy and a cultural heritage policy to return to Governance Standing Policy Committee in 2025, and also direct administration to return to city council through the Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee for approval of any of these objectives identified in the 2024 Civic Culture Plan as follows. Capital projects to be submitted to future capital improvement program deliberations, and initiatives requiring budget, operating budget changes to be submitted to future operating, operation budget deliberations. And last, direct administration to return to city council through the Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee with periodic updates on civic culture plan initiatives. And Recommendation of Governance Standing Policy Committee, Bylaw 6448, Bylaw Amendment 6099, the city manager bylaw, be resolved that first reading, Bylaw 6448, amendment to city manager bylaw 6099, and repeal Policy CC 37, Real Estate Acquisition, and Policy CC 45, Real Estate Lands Sales and Leases, after third reading of Bylaw 6448. And next, recommendation of Governance Standing Policy Committee, Bylaw 6431, and bylaw of the city of Lethbridge to amend the city manager bylaw, Bylaw 6099, and city clerk bylaw 4783, be resolved that city council provide first reading to Bylaw 6431, amendment to city manager bylaw 6099, and city clerk bylaw 4783. So, with that, to Deputy Mayor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry it was so wordy. The bulk of these items are items that were vetted and discussed, and are recommendations coming from committee. The other items are the minutes and status of directed resolutions. I reviewed them, didn't see anything, but my colleagues have comments. If not, I will call for the vote.
All right. Question's been called. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on now to official business motions. And I do have a motion from Counselor Middleton Hope, Fee-for-Service Cost-Benefit Analysis, whereas economic development and tourism are inter, oh, integral municipal activities to attract investment and foster vibrant city, and whereas presently such activities are conducted by external parties contracted under fee-for-service agreements, and whereas the city of Lethbridge allocates significant monies per year to economic development Lethbridge and tourism Lethbridge, and whereas it is fiscally prudent periodically to review and assess the cost-benefits of such fee-for-service arrangements to determine the results of value being received for the public money being invested. Therefore, be resolved, the city council directs the city manager to undertake a review of fee-for-service arrangements with economic development Lethbridge and tourism Lethbridge to determine whether each external entity is achieving its defined objectives in an effective and efficient manner at a cost benefit to the city of Lethbridge. Whether, number two, whether each fee-for-service agreement has clearly defined performance metrics that provide a clear, concise picture of alignment with the city of Lethbridge's priorities, and with outcomes that correlate to the funds provided. Number three, whether in each case, the city of Lethbridge would be best served by continuing with the existing fee-for-service model or considering other models for the delivery of such services. Number four, the efficacy of existing connection points between these two entities and internal city departments, as well as any potential synergies or changes that merit consideration. So, open it up to questions. There are questions. No questions? Oh, you're not sure? Oh, technology is not working. All right. Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, first, Mike, first question is to the mover. Are you planning to do, is this something you're proposing with all fee-for-service organizations within the corporation, or is this, are these just two, or is this going to be like a trend that, what is the, what is your, what is your goal in regards to all our fee-for-services? Everything from allied arts, all that kind of stuff?
So, these are the two largest of the fee-for-service, or the organizations that we have MOUs with. Why not start with them? It is an opportunity for us, as a corporation, to review all of our relationships with an abundance of service providers. In many cases, this has not been completed in eight or more years, and it has been something that has been on the, it has been on the horizon. It has been discussed at the administrative level for some time. We haven't taken the time to go over it and review it. This is simply an opportunity for us to ensure that what we are providing by way of fees for service organizations or MOUs with a variety of different organizations that we're getting our full value for, and that's what the citizens of this city demand of us.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, our KPMG, did we, didn't we do an analysis of something similar to this, of EDL?
Through the mayor, yes, we did. I would say, having been through KPMG and other external consultant reviews elsewhere and things like this, an internal review is substantially different than a KPMG review, and is what I would more commonly associate with the best practice, due diligence in any organization.
So, I'm hearing your answer, and thank you for that answer. Is administration supportive of doing things such as this?
Fits the will of council. I think due diligence is always a good thing. For exactly that reason, due diligence helps you to, so while some might perceive this as looking for something nefarious or gotcha, it's just simply due diligence, as I continue to say, and seeing is there things that we could be doing differently, better? Are we aligned? Are we connected? And at the same time, there could be things that are being done exceptionally well that can be highlighted through a process like this.
And my last question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, to yourself. Is there some kind of hybrid versus doing something different in regards to reviewing this organization or these organizations? Is it something you could send to committee, or something where it's more collaborative? Maybe this is collaborative, and maybe I'll hear that in the comments when I, when I hear the issue. the issue. Is there another way of doing, going about it? Or is this pretty much the way you have to do it?
So, yeah, in my experience, this, the review process, the internal review, it is done by a lead party. So in this case, if it was the will of council for us to proceed, the city would lead. We would have our own internal resources. I can ask Mr. Matthews, the CFO, to speak to that more. And we would establish the criteria and work through it in that facet. That keeps it independent and allows the information to come back to council for decisions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Crowson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. To the mover, to Counselor Middleton Hope, did you sit down with either of these organizations previous to creating this motion?
I did not.
Okay. So there was no collaborative working with them on the development of this?
There was no discussion with either one of these organizations, actually with no organizations. This is a discussion that we had with administration in regards to what are our processes? When was the last time? Did we exercise this process? When I found out that it was an extensive period of time between when we did it last time and now, I said, well, why haven't we?
Okay. Mr. City Manager, have we had any complaints from the community about either of these organizations? Any formal complaints?
Nothing that comes to mind. I, it's a difficult question because I'm not omnipresent, so I, but nothing that comes to top of my mind, no.
Okay. And when was the last time that MOU with EDL, for example, was reviewed?
I'll look to Mr. Matthews. I think 2016 was the last date I have. Is that correct, Mr. Matthews?
Agree. So to my understanding, Counselor Crowson, that is 2016 in there. However, there was the KPMG component that took a look at it and, you know, the report was completed, I believe, in 2020, as well as so prior, just prior to that as well to some of the work in there.
Perfect. Thank you. I will likely have more questions later, Mayor Higgin, but I'll step out now.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
I think most of my questions has been sort of answered, but to the mover, was there any concern about, obviously, these, this kind of came as a surprise to the two organizations here. Do you have any concerns about, you know, we need relationships, we need partnerships. They work well with City Council right now and have up till now as well. So was there any concern when you brought this forward about kind of a breakdown in that relationship at all? Or can you reassure everyone here that this has got nothing to do with what has happened, what they've done? This is just, we just want to make sure we're doing it right?
So there's a couple of parts to your question. Part of, part of, part of your question, I think, Mark, is that are these organizations not doing something right? I'm not suggesting that they aren't. I'm not suggesting that they're not doing everything right. What I'm suggesting is we haven't taken the time as a corporation to a deep, to do a deep dive on these organizations and others that we provide a substantial amount of money to, to perform a necessary service. So what I'm saying is, why haven't we done that? Why aren't we doing that? Candidly, I have been the head of an organization of several hundred people. I welcome this type of exam, self-examination. There's nothing to be afraid of. We're not saying that EDL or or Tourism Lethbridge is not doing a good job. That's quite the contrary. The reality is, is when we conduct an assessment like this, an assessment that is not spearheaded by either one of the organizations, but rather by the city, we get a different perspective. And that's healthy.
Was there, was there an aha moment for you to make this resolution? Was there anything that happened or just, just the realization that this hadn't been done in a while?
I think the latter. As you're probably well aware and other members of council, I brought forward more, more motions to this group than I think the rest of council combined over the last three years. I do this because I'm convinced that this is what the citizens of our city are asking us to do. This is good business. This is good due diligence. That's what we're doing. So at the end of the day, have I been thinking about this to target EDL or or Tourism Lethbridge for some time? Absolutely not. This is a natural process. In conversations with members of administration over a long period of time, what have we done? What are we doing? What can we do better? How can we do better than we need to do better?
Great. Just one more question, then maybe to Mr. Matthews, if I may, Mr. Chair. Just in terms of, you know, the, well, cost, for one thing, and then also who, who? And what's it going to take? I mean, and how, I mean, I know we're coming up at a budget time and all that sort of thing, and that we're also going to be reviewing all of our fee for services. What additional time commitment is this? Can it be done in your estimation? And what's, what is it ultimately going to cost taxpayers?
Thank you. Through to Counselor Campbell. So in regards to this, a couple of things on this. This timeframe will take us approximately about, we're figuring about eighteen months to do both organizations. The cost of it is around $162,000. Now, what that means is though, there's actually some succession pieces inside of here. And when I say the cost of this, we actually have the funding internally. So this isn't new, it's not coming from the MRSRs. It's actually coming from money we set aside for doing reviews. One of the things that we, we actually are planning to do across the organization is internal reviews on different areas, whether it's departments, whether it's fee for service and so forth. So we actually have the money set aside to be able to do this work. What I say succession planning and and work pieces on it here, too, within our teams, we have staff that have came from other firms where they do audits and so forth, you know, under myself, too, who, who looks, you know, my expertise as a CIA, Certified Internal Auditor, they'll be working with. And of course, we also have our Corporate Performance Group that also looks at things from performance measures and stuff. So if council was interested in doing this, we'd be looking at the performance metrics as an example. We'd be looking at the mandate and so forth, and that would all be pieces that we would be using. And why, the reason I say succession and so forth is also it allows us internally to elevate some people to work on pieces and elevate others to do their work. And the, what, how the cost is working is we come with the lowest cost, which is actually bringing in technician staff on, for a period of time during that to actually do that work. So if council wishes to do this, we've came up with the ability to do this internally. That would actually, in the long term, also provides further bench, bring the knowledge within our organization.
I would, I would say that that could be a template for other fee for services.
That is correct.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I do have a question that I just, to confirm what I've heard, and thank you, Acting Mayor Campbell, for the question. So we're hearing in, of course, out there is 160,000?
162,000 is the, the amount for eighteen months.
Okay. However, that is internal staff.
Correct.
Already allocated funding.
Correct.
No additional funding, pulling from MRSR or taxation. It's already allocated to do this type of work.
Correct.
I just want to confirm that because out there it's going to be your.
Spending additional dollars?
No. It's already been allocated.
This is already allocated for doing this type of work. And as I mentioned, whether it's in internal groups or whether it's other groups, you know, that we work with in this regard, whether it's under MOUs or a fee for service.
And help with metrics going forward within our, our own reviews as well, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to the city manager or designate, just going back even to looking at the motion here, we've got that presently such activities are conducted by external parties contracted for fee for service agreements. It's my understanding that economic development Lethbridge operates under a memorandum of understanding, not a fee for service?
Through the mayor, through the mayor, to Counselor Schmidt-Rempel, that is correct. So between the two bodies, Tourism Lethbridge is a fee for service agreement. The actual Lethbridge, Economic Development Lethbridge is a memorandum of understanding. Those are the agreement types. I think where it's getting confusing out there on it is that through our budgeting and our dollar values, we determine those on the financial side as a fee for service. So if you're looking in our, our budget pages and inside of there, the funding that gets allocated to those two organizations come from a fee for service. The reason for that is those components would become a municipal service if they weren't done by those community groups.
Okay. So thanks for the clarification on that. Now, how does a review and implementing changes of the results of these two reviews differ between the two organizations if we're looking at an MOU as opposed to a fee for service?
So it comes down to the, the objectives and so forth that council wants. So there are specific components already laid out in the MOU for economic development Lethbridge that they provide and that they note, in fact, inside of there, they come along with. So that would be the basis of starting that. So to answer your question, it really comes down to the individual agreements and the services that, that those organizations are providing. And as well, we're just recently been working with Tourism Lethbridge to come with their fee for service agreement as well, too. So that would be the basis of that, too, that we've been working on.
Okay. To that point, then, when we approved the new process for fee for service organizations, was that, was that not part of the, the new process for fee for service organizations that they would be reviewed as they came up for renewal? So aren't we already repeating some work in this motion? Because that's work that administration should already be doing. Is that work not being done?
So there is the fee for service component. I think where the, the difference in that is that those would, those would naturally come along, if I'm understanding the, the areas there and discussion on, I know that recalculation that has permeated a lot of these, these agreements, has been going through and working on the agreements. So has, you know, in this case, both these organizations are with Opportunity Lethbridge as internally. So that would, from that point of view. However, both these current organizations haven't gone through that process to it. And, and so this would be the starting point of, of these two.
Okay. And then just finally, before I step out, then, what, what have we heard that they're not fulfilling under their MOU or fee for service agreement to this point? What gaps are they not fulfilling that would lead to this kind of review?
To that regard, I'm not sure if I can fully answer this, you know, from that point of view, but my understanding is that, that it's not necessary that they're not fully, not providing the service. It's actually going back and taking a look at things of the mandate, the performance metrics, what, what the value is for the money components. So there's a number of things that we're going to be looking at, I mean, to back to that fee for service discussion that we were just having there for all groups of, for the, for the funding that's coming from the municipality. It's taking a look at what could be done and how we would look at it from a performance metric side. If council remembers back last budget, one of the things that council also had asked us about is starting to put more business case, more, more of those pieces that the departments are coming forward with. This is also aligning this into those aspects as well.
So we were already planning on doing this, then?
Not to this extent. So this would be larger in the sense that we'd be going into a much further development of this. So the business case in those regards for budget would be a much higher level. This here would be going in and taking a look at a little bit more in depth in regards to mission and mandate. So what is council's mission and mandate for EDL, for the services that they're providing from the EDL organization or Tourism Lethbridge? And how would that? And coming to some agreement, I know those, some of those questions were discussed in the KPMG review, but not all of them, specifically not by this council, have been addressed in the sense that the mandate in itself and mission on those things, I think there's still some work that I know that came back in some of the reports as well that still need to be looked at. That is important because those things greatly change. For example, if it's, is it for economic development Lethbridge for the Lethbridge area or is it for the region? That's the thing that council will have to decide, and there's a difference between what's currently in the MOU in 2016, MOU versus what's in currently in the business plan for EDL. So that's just one example of things for council to consider. There's no right answers there. This really comes back as information for council, and council makes the op, the actual decision on, on what makes sense. And then, of course, collaboration between the two.
Okay. I'll step out for now, but I do have more questions.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, if I can, to city manager or designate. I appreciate that, that there's no request for funding for this, 162,000, we think it's going to cost. What, what else would those dollars have been used for, though? Because just because we're not asking for more funding, there were probably plans in place for those dollars, I hope. And so what will, what will be kicked down the road or put aside on this? What else could we have used those dollars for? That's ten days of exhibition.
There we go. Through the mayor to Counselor Carlson. So in that regard, some of the funding that we're using for this was actually going to be used for other reviews that no longer required from an external point of view. For example, the Carl's review that we did earlier on, we did that all in house. We had money set aside for that, and now it's been here, moved to this, of this example. We also set aside money inside for doing reviews. We can't always determine what reviews we need to do. And so we do put some money inside of the budget or save some money aside. And in this case here, we, we put them over the period of time. This is in our BAUs for operational reviews. So we actually have that under the city manager's side. So to your answer, there were actually really, there was commitments for, for these funds that we did internally, and then we were able to reallocate to this.
Okay. Thank you. So the, these dollars were actually allocated for external reviews.
Either external or internal, but they're, they're there for dollars. So if we had a backfill, like we're doing here in this case for a staff, now what we're doing instead is instead of hiring a consultant, we are actually doing it internally with the expertise we have. And then we're bringing in somebody at a much lower rate to backfill for that person or people that are working on that, that project.
But nothing is going to get kicked down, like, one of the comments I hear in community is you're going to spend 200 grand to review some fairly minor, in the grand scheme of our budget, fee for services as opposed to the rest of the $400,000 or $400 million budget. But that will not be put off. We are constantly doing our internal looks and making sure we're providing the value for.
That is correct. So we, we, so this is not going to put any of those, those pieces off. So we have a whole other, you know, like we do regularly take a look at other pieces and whether that's just our continuous controls monitoring or other pieces, there's other pieces that go on behind the scenes. Some are large, some are small components, but that is not affecting that. This is actually put aside for these type of things so we can deal with them as we come along.
Perfect. Thank you for that. I think Counselor Campbell, sorry, Acting Mayor Campbell asked about time, cost, capacity for us. Eighteen months to get this work done. No discussion with either of the, the groups that are being put forward today. Have we talked to them about their time, capacity and costs? We're in the middle of a, just in the middle of a four-year budget cycle. This is something that they might not be prepared for or have capacity for, or they're busy doing the work they promised council. So have we talked to them about their capacity?
So through the mayor to Counselor Carlson, in that regard, it would be premature for us to discuss it with them yet because until council makes the decision whether they want to proceed or even look at this, it would be, it was not something that we would go out and just knock on their door and, and, and look at. So we knew this, this resolution was coming up. We've done some background work in the sense of, of just, you know, like, as I mentioned, how would we do it? And what would, would we think the rough timelines to do this within? When I say eighteen months, we're figuring that we, you know, like, that is a period of work time. That's not at eighteen months of, that's eighteen months of duration. And, and yes, there will be pieces of where we're engaged and not engaged with, with the groups. So it doesn't mean that they would be working 100% with us for eighteen months. Two groups, two different pieces, and then, of course, work behind the scenes in our end that we'd have to do, including things on jurisdictional scans and other, other components.
Okay. And thank you. And final question for you, I'll hop out if I can, Mr. Mayor. And is this, does this timeline of eighteen months, if council approves this, does this fit in to the upcoming schedule for future council that's going to do the, what are we calling the stub year budget and then their four-year budget? Because for me, this information would be most relevant before next council goes into their four-year budget cycle. We've set ours. We had two groups, we had all of our groups come in and say, here's our proposals here. Council got to ask the questions and probe and dive and say, what are we getting for this? What are we getting for this? What are we getting for this? It, it kind of seems premature, in my opinion, to go halfway through a cycle and say, show us the facts. And they're like, well, we haven't, we're just halfway through. And they're like, well, we haven't, we're just halfway through. It would make more sense to me for this to inform the four-year budget, which I think would be in 2028. I'm pulling a number out of my head, but I think it's 2028. So, just a, just a question about the timeline. Is this, is this the best timeline for this?
Once again, thank you, Counselor Carlson. So, yes, you're right on the timeframe for the, the next four-year budget is 2028. The stub year or the one-year approval will be 2027. What this would allow in timelines, time we get into the budgeting period and deliberations, which would be in 2027, if I get my, my thoughts process here right, for the operating budget for that four years, it would be quite a bit of, of work, you know? We'd have to back it up in there, 18 months at least from there. So, the reason why it probably, the best for us inside of here, keeping in mind that if we're, if council wishes to go through this, is the best time for, for our staff to do it. And the reason being is we're not into the CIP, which would be deliberations in 2026. And then, we go into 2027 for those deliberations. And so, we're, we're, our staff will be tied up on doing the operating budget. So, we have to back it up 18 months from there. To your, to answer your question in regards to timing, yeah, I would think it actually would fall in lines with the next council in making decisions on whatever, whatever information came out of this. Not to say that this council couldn't, but I think that time you get into 18 months, it would be, it'd be following in lines for the next business process.
All right. You are good. All right. With that, moving on to Counselor Dodik.
Yeah, we've been talking about 18 months, but the resolution actually doesn't say when the report is, is to come back. So, based on your comments with respect to Deputy Mayor Carlson.
Thank you. Where's my gavel?
What should, what should be the timeframe or the time for which the report that we're talking about should be presented to council?
Thank you, Counselor Dodik. In regards to that, yes, it'd be 18 months from the time we take this forward. So, if, if council wishes to start now, so roughly, just after council election, I think is where that timeframe is, I'm thinking 18 months. So, in the fall of, of 2025 would be coming back.
Okay. And obviously, this is not going to affect any budget that's been approved or any amendments to any budget, should those be requested and approved prior to the budget cycle. Is that right?
That's right. So, this is more boat information piece than council and potentially the next council in that timeframe would make the decisions on any budget components that come out of it or any decisions that would happen. And it's not affecting us operationally, once again.
Then, a final question to the mover, and that is, I take it from your comments that resolution was meant to be a benign resolution and simply to have the administration have a look at, for the timing, these two organizations, sort of along the lines, like we do reviews annually on CEO as we're mandated to do by Municipal Government Act, and then other organizations do it as well. So, your intent is, I'm not saying one way or another, whether the duties asked of these organizations are being performed, but rather, it's been a long time since they've been reviewed, and we should do a review at this point in time. Would that be an accurate sort of synopsis of what you're trying to do?
It would. There was a word that you used. I didn't hear it, but it started with, it started with a B.
I said benign, that you were, you were seeing this as a benign resolution.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you very much. My first, my first question is to the mover. You have both organizations tied in this resolution. And would it be, like, if you look at Tourism Lethbridge, Tourism Lethbridge's mandate is probably less than two years old, if not, just maybe a little longer. So, whereas EDL, the MU is 2016, would, would it be fair to say that tourism should have a few more years to get some data, some information before you do an analysis? Because the, the new formation of the organization is, is quite new in its infancy. So, would, would it be fair to say that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay. No, I, I, I don't think so. I think, I think any organization, and these two organizations, as we indicated, are the largest of the types of organizations that we're looking at, are some of the largest. We want to develop a template. We want to move forward with this. I would imagine that both organizations and other organizations that we have relationships with are conducting ongoing analysis of their practices and how they generate services to the city and to our citizens and how they're, they're both utilizing the funds that are appointed to them as well as generating revenue and income for the city. I would imagine that they're doing this on a regular basis. So, I don't see that, I, I don't see this as a hardship in talking with our administration. We don't see it as a hardship in terms of the imposition of asking our people to do something that we probably should have been doing all along. We just simply didn't do it.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. I don't know if I agree with you, but that's, I appreciate the answer, but we'll get into the debate in a sec here. Words matter, and we use the word fee-for-service cost-benefit analysis. And if you're any organization, when you see those, it puts red flags in your organization. It, it kind of gets people concerned and all that, especially for some, it may feel like, man, like, but something like this could be seen as something like, we need to allocate more resources to an organization. It's an opportunity to look in the mirror for these organizations. It's not about taking money away. It could show that maybe these organizations are underfunded, so we have to have, keep an open mind. My question to you is, or maybe to the city manager, not, or to Mr. Mayor or to the city clerk, obviously, these organizations are in the room. They're probably like, I had an answer for that. I wish I could answer that, or something like that. Is there another format that we could ask these questions? So, we could ask these people, you know, these are the questions you've heard, because there may be some opportunity for clarity to add to the answers to, or maybe them to ask some questions. An SBC, I think, could probably be the most appropriate for something, for this conversation. I understand this, but I, there's two sides to the story. There's many players at the party here. So, is SBC the appropriate place? And I don't know who I ask that question to. I guess, here's my question. Madam City Clerk, if we want organizations to be able to answer questions from us, the only format really would be, outside of a council meeting, would it be an SBC? Am I correct?
That's, that is correct. SPCs are the forum to have public speak.
Okay. So, my question to the mover is, was there any discussion or thought of SBC? If not, why?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Parker, there's, there's, there's something from some statements. We'll be coming forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Carlson?
Actually, I was going to see if we could have them speak today, but I think a referral to economic SPC would be better. So, I am going to step out of the queue because I think Deputy Mayor Carlson is already bringing for, forward a referral motion. So, I'll step out and ask those at the economic if that is the will of council to go to an economic.
All right. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for sort of asking the same questions I was about timing and, and how to appropriately deal with this. And I appreciate the mover bringing this forward today, but I, I think just in fairness to the organizations and to the community, this would be better served at a committee to discuss it. I'd rather work with people than impose something on folks. So, I would make a referral motion to an upcoming, probably economic and finance, so all members of council can participate. I was thinking governance, because I'm not on governance. But, but Mayor, or former Mayor Dodik, now Counselor Dodik, glared at me. So, I'd like to make a referral motion at this time. And I'm not sure what's the appropriate time. I know Tourism Lethbridge, EDL, to do it in a month may be a bit challenging. So, either, either next month, or I guess the next one would be the fall.
So, before, before you put forward a motion, I'd like to ask Counselor Carlson, wake up. What are we imposing on these organizations? What, what is it that we're imposing on them? What we're asking them to do is to provide, to work with us, to provide us insights into how they do business, to ensure that what they're doing is the best possible return for the city, given the funding that we provide to them. As Counselor Parker talked about earlier, or mentioned earlier, maybe the funding that they're provided isn't the right fit. And he's right. Okay? So, what are we imposing on these two organizations? What we're doing is we're asking them to work with us to examine them.
Counselor, we're in, we're in the middle of debate on a referral motion.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. On a question, if we can, there's got to be two reasons for, for a referral. One is, there must be a reason, and then also, the second, that we got to have a date that it's going to be referred to. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct. And the body it's coming back to, I think, which was already says economic and finance SPC, but we do need the date.
And the date.
And the reasons for referral.
So, it, it sounds like it's not going to be a.
Well, before, before we do that, perhaps, let's, let's ask the city manager what.
Questions on, just, just a moment. We'll wait for questions on the referral. But first of all, let's, let's, or the referral, let's check on a date so that we do have the date and the, the committee. Then, we can do a question on, we can question on that referral.
And a reason.
And a reason, yeah. So, what is the date that, the next economic?
July 11th.
July the 11th? So, is, are you trying to guess when you're not going to be here, Counselor Carlson?
Yes. I'm seeing if I can go, asking Counselor Dodik would be, yes. I think it'd be nice if all of council was here.
July 11th, and that's an economic? And the reason for referral, again, is?
Just to be able to get some information and ask some questions of the two organizations.
Two organizations.
So, we're not looking for any information ahead of time? It's just to have those people come forward at economic and finance SPC to answer questions?
Bring anything with them from this meeting. It's going to be to engage prior.
Yeah. Just as I said, I'd, I'd rather work with people than just impose something.
There's a position again.
Mr. City Manager, do you have something to add to this?
Certainly, to Counselor Middleton Hope's question, and I'm going to walk a delicate line here. I, I will say, and I, maybe I'm misunderstanding it correctly, and I don't want to sound like I'm debating council because I'm not. The comments about referring to committee and if I, the way I understood it is, could this be done through discussions at committee instead of doing an internal review? And the example I would suggest is, it's going to sting, Lethbridge and District Exhibition over a period of 18 months and having the discussions at committee and council and never quite getting to where we needed to, which resulted in some change. I'm not suggesting there is, there is any issues here or anything else. As I said in my comments earlier, it could be that there are great things going on here. What I'm, all I'm simply saying is, it is a completely different level from an internal review versus a discussion at committee. It is simply that.
And Mr. City.
It's not negative, positive. I'm just trying to explain the difference.
And if I can, Mr. Bradley, my intent is not to do the review at committee. My intent is to invite the two organizations to have a discussion with the committee about the review process, should it go forward. Not to do the review at committee, but to, rather than to surprise someone, to say, here's what we'd like to do, here's how we think we've accomplished. When I ask the question, our capacity in time, $162,000, 18 months, neither organization has a budget line for this or a timeframe for this. I'd like to know that before we impose something. Impose.
Understood. Yeah. I just wanted to explain the difference between committee discussion and internal review.
All right. So, on the table, we have a referral motion. So, we can do the questions on the referral motion. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
On the referral, questions on the referral motion.
On the referral motion, on Thursday this week coming up, we do have a motion that came out of, it was our last, it was to refer a motion from Counselor Middleton Hope that Economic Finance Standing Policy Committee refer this report to administration for review and investigation with the report back to Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee. And that is coming back now on June 13th. So, this is essentially the same motion that's now coming back. Can we do two of the same requests in the same week within the same referrals? Because we're now looking at the review and investigation of Economic Development Lethbridge to come this week, June 13th. Is this not a review and investigation of Economic Development Lethbridge? That was from, this is, I'm looking at this week's Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee, item 6.1, and that the item was postponed to the June 13th meeting of the Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee. And it was reviewing and investigating Economic Development Lethbridge. So, I'm just wondering if we don't have two of the exact same issues coming forward here? And we can't.
Actually, if you, we should probably reset just for, for a minute here so they can have a conversation and.
If I may, my understanding again of that was it was specific to.
N42.
N42.
Right.
And Mr. Lewington, Mr. Sanchez, Ms. Slovac, and I did meet and discuss that and some of the, the gaps and the ability to work together. I think we worked through that, Mr. Lewington. I think we addressed all of that and the path forward. So, I think that was done.
That's N42 coming up.
That was, that was my understanding of what Counselor Schmidt-Rempel is talking about, was it was compartmentalized, specific to that issue.
Right. Yeah. N42, it's nothing to do with this, but, okay. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
Just in follow-up to that, though, in the video, when I asked if it was specific to N42 or Economic Development Lethbridge as a whole, it was stated that it was N42 and Economic Development Lethbridge as a whole. I went back to review the video yesterday just to ensure that I was remembering that correctly, and I see Daryl Matthews giving me a nod. Or, or he's just considering me. Oh, yes. Mm, yeah. Uh-huh. So, just chewing a cheesy, just to go along with that. So, if that is specific to N42, that's fine. But when I went back to review the video, I did ask whether that was that or it was EDL as a whole.
Yeah. So, back to that, N42 is EDL initiative with the change in, in money from one year moving same envelope amount change. So, that's that. And back to the connections and the discussion. If I recall, at that meeting, we were talking about things such as the, the rail lines and whose responsibility that was and would it be EDL versus the city? And because the city holds the responsibility and the relationship there, that's how I would contextualize it. That wouldn't be an EDL thing. Some of that would actually be more city-led, and that was the discussion that, that the four of us had.
Okay. So, that's specific to N42. The other point that I have that confuses me as well is that on that date, the report that EDL submitted was their annual documents, not just N42. And the motion speaks to referring this report to administration for review and investigation, which to me speaks that we are reviewing, we are referring all of EDL's report for review and investigation. But if you're stating that this is specific to N42, then.
Yeah. Right now, we're, we're working on the resolution that's on the table to refer this.
Yep.
And if this is going to go forward, if it's one or two, or whatever it is on that date, we're not.
We're only speaking to N42 on Thursday.
We're, N42 is, is what's come up from previous. But right now, on the floor is not N42. It's not what we're doing. It's referring this.
But I'm clarifying that on Thursday, we're not speaking to the whole of Economic Development Lethbridge. We're only speaking to N42 because the motion doesn't necessarily say that and the conversation we had at the last meeting.
The motion.
It's right here.
Refer this report to administration to review and investigation with the report back to Economic and Finance.
And the report was there.
So, review and investigate N42, I would imagine, but it's not in there.
No. That was their whole annual report.
Yeah. So, what came of that, I, I think we've already heard, it's, we're dissecting this. However, right now on the floor, I'm sorry, this is, this is not what's on the table right now. On the table is to defer, or to refer this to the upcoming on July the, July the 11th.
Yeah. No, as long as I have that clarification that we're not discussing this.
Do you have a question with that one? We can deal with that one. This one is to refer this to July 11th.
And as long as we have that clarification.
I will say again, councillor Schmidt-Rempel, this is to refer this that's on the table. So any questions, the movers, Jeff, to have this referred? Are there any questions from my colleagues? Councillor Middleton Hope?
So councillor Carlson. So. Gudley's funny. What are you hoping to accomplish with this? That the, that taking this forward as it has been proposed through this motion, which is very separate from N42. What do you hope to accomplish with this?
And thank.
How can I get behind it?
Basically, councillor Middleton Hope, what I'd, I'd, I'd like just an opportunity for the groups that are being proposed to have this review done to to just come in front of committee and have a chat or any members of the public who won't have a chat. As, as in to some of my questions, how long is this going to take? Have we talked to the group about their capacity and their timelines to impose something without saying, how can we make this work for you and us? Is all I'm hoping to accomplish is just have that discussion.
Okay. You mentioned both the two organizations that are identified in the motion, and you talked about the public. Do you envision other organizations who may be the subject of an examination in the future? Do you envision them also coming to an SPC?
I guess it would depend on the timing and the scope. For me, it's just a case of, I've always gone by the motto, nothing about us without us. And so I don't like to be sort of heavy-handed in things. I think we can accomplish everything we need to do a review. But it's just always fair and polite to say, how would this also work with your organization, your timelines, your capacity? Rather than say, we're doing this, hell or high water, it's happening. I don't know what the organizations have on their plate, what they're trying to accomplish over the next two and a half years of their budget cycle, that this may put a wrench in. And that's all. I just want to say, this is what we'd like to accomplish out of it. How can we work together? Rather than us just saying, it shall be done.
Thy will be done? Nice. Thank you.
All right. See, no further questions. So John, you, okay, off now. On the referral. So are we okay to go to a vote on the referral? All right. All those in favor? And opposed? All right. That's eight one. All right, let's move along here to, I have a resolution from councillor Dotick, affordable and social housing capital grant, Lethbridge Housing Authority. Whereas the affordable and social housing capital grant, CC49, grant presently has allocated unallocated funds of $2.714,137 million available to support social and affordable housing projects. And whereas Lethbridge Housing Authority, LHA, has through an agreement dated May 1st, 2023, with the government of Alberta, through Alberta Social Housing Corporation, provincial funding, received a funding commitment to build 25 permanent supportive housing units in Lethbridge. And that's unattached to page one of the agreement. And whereas the provincial funding for the 25 units is for $10.226 million with the total cost of the project estimated by the LHA to be $11.276 million. And whereas the city of Lethbridge had subsequent to May 1st, 2023, after a public hearing, approved zoning which would allow 30 supportive housing units to be built at 416 Stafford Drive North, Lethbridge, Alberta being the project site. And whereas LHA had made a request which was submitted to the Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee held on May 7th, 2024, for up to $1,050,000 from the grant for a number of reasons identified in the submission presented. And whereas funding from the grant had previously been provided to a number of other organizations providing social housing at an average of $35,000 per unit, therefore be resolved that Lethbridge Housing Authority be provided up to $1,050,000 from the affordable and social housing capital grant for the supportive housing project located at 416 Stafford Drive North, Lethbridge, Alberta, conditional upon the inclusion of key project features, including security fencing, a dedicated outdoor space, commercial kitchen, and dedicated space for future inclusion of medical and pharmaceutical facilities, and be execution by the Lethbridge Housing Authority and the city of Lethbridge of an agreement in a form with terms and conditions satisfactory to the city manager who, together with the city clerk, are authorized to sign such agreement. Open it up to questions. Councillor Middleton Hope?
Thank you. And this will be obviously to the mover to begin with. I'm confused. I have had, I have had an opportunity to initially, when Ms. James approached me some time ago to receive information about what the challenges they were facing. I've had numerous conversations with our administration, who has also had conversations with Ms. James. Quite candidly, we've got, it sounds like we have a challenge here. I don't know what it is. I don't know what the issues are, and I don't know how much it's going to cost to fix. So I'd like to find that out.
Okay, if I could actually have you open this, because, okay, we open it up to questions that we usually do, but this is a little bit different here today because we hadn't come back to this meeting. So if you'll give the time here, please councillor Middleton Hope, to have it first introduced by councillor Dudik. Dudik. Councillor Dotick. And I'm sure your questions will be answered within his opening remarks. So a little different than previous, but this is how it was sent forward to council today referred. And madam city clerk, is there anything that you have to add?
Well, this item relates to item, I believe, 9.1. And so they're going to kind of be dealt with in conjunction. So I understand from agenda review that councillor Dotick would open, then we would allow LHA and the public to speak because we made that motion prior. And then there would be a vote or a debate and vote and all that. Yeah.
Okay, so is that councillor Middleton Hope still open up for questions after? That's fine, if they're not answered by the opening for councillor Dotick, by councillor Dotick. So councillor Dotick, if you would open, thank you.
Okay, well, first off, I will refer to what the city clerk mentioned, that we had a previous resolution from, I believe it came from economic SPC, and it was basically to have the request moved to the budget debate in November. Then it turned out, at least in my own mind, it was that there wasn't, there was information that I was missing that then became available to me, which then prompted me to bring this resolution. So the opening really is, I'll give you a bit of a timeline, is that what had happened was that there was a zoning request that went through a public hearing, and the zoning request for supportive housing for the area we're talking about was for 30 units, allowed for 30 units. But the initial request to the government was for 25 supportive units, which was approved by the government in May of 2023. And that is attached to the official business motion. The reason I attached that to it was to show, because it was a little bit of disconnect as to what was the government paying for 25 units or for 30 units, because the CEO of Lethbridge Housing Authority had indicated that they were building 30 units. Initially, they thought they were going to be able to build the 30 units based on the 25 units that had been approved and funded to the tune of just over $10.2 million from the province. Now, it then later turned out that there is going to be, well, obviously, there was a bit of a change in scope. They thought they were going to be able to do the extra five units, but they also wanted to put in some additional facilities so to build and be able to rent out pharmaceutical space, medical space. And it's sort of in the material that was previously provided to us. They also encountered difficulties with the soil conditions, which also contributed to a number of, I don't have the specific details, but hundreds of thousands of dollars to the cost. Now. But if you'll recall, when I talked about it and introduced this, I said that we have to look at this as to whether or not this is a project that would qualify for the grant we're talking about, which is the affordable and social housing capital grant. And if you go back, you'll see that what usually happens is that we get an organization that comes in seeking the grant money conditionable upon securing provincial or federal money. So a good example of that is on October 3, 2023. Streets Live came and said, look, would you give us $560,000 from that affordable and social housing capital funding request? And they said, subject to an additional equal amount from the province. In this case, like I said, the the Lethbridge Housing Authority sought the money first from the province and did a good job in getting it. And now they're asking us to deal with not only some unexpected expenses, but also to do some additional work that they're doing on the property, which I noted in the official business motion. So I would encourage people not to look at it as, well, they've incurred extra cost, even though that is a component of it. But we're asking them also to sign an agreement with the city manager to their satisfaction and to ensure that they put in the features that were included in the presentation that was provided to us, which includes the security fences, dedicated outdoor space, commercial dedicated space for future inclusion of medical and pharmaceutical facilities. So that's what this resolution is about. We've got the money set aside. We've got 2.7 million set aside. Once that's gone, it's gone. Thinking about potentially whether there might be projects in the future, that's not the way to look at this. We have a project now. It should be completed to the best as possible. And we've already got a $10.2 million commitment from the province. And I think it is incumbent upon us to at least provide them up to $1,050,000, which is the average provided for various projects. And I know some went as low as $17,000, but I think there was one that went at $160,000. So a door. So you're getting a good project. We have Lethbridge Housing Authority to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention this a little bit different. And so those that were here for the previous meeting, we put on for engagement here at the next upcoming Economic and Standing Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee. So many will wonder why is Lethbridge Housing and speakers allowed to speak at this at a city council meeting? It is because from May 7th, at the Economic and Standing Policy Committee, May 7th, it says that city council bring forward the below-directed approval from the May 7th, 2024 Economic Finance Standing Policy Committee to June 11th, 2024, meeting of city council and allow representatives of the Lethbridge Housing Authority and the public to speak at the meeting. So that is why this is somewhat like a standing policy committee, because this was a decision of council back at the Economic Standing Policy Committee that it would come forward. So I just wanted to make people aware because I know the question will probably come, well, why didn't you just deal with the previous one the same way? That is why this was a direction from council previously. So with that, I will now open it up to questions now that councillor Dotick has opened that. So councillor Middleton Hope, did you still have questions? You don't?
Do you want the public to speak first?
Or would you like the public to speak first to my colleagues and then maybe the questions will come? We'll put it on to.
Did you want to answer for me?
We'll put it off to council first. Go ahead. I know you're eager. You're sitting itching in your chair. We'll let you speak. Go ahead.
So I've heard most recently from Mr. Matthews in regards to several of my questions. I'd like to give the opportunity, if it's permissible, to Ms. James to respond to some of the questions that I have.
Absolutely. That's what this is for, for sure. And then they will be asked to speak if they do, anybody else in the public wants to speak. So yes, you can do that.
Thank you. Ms. James, could you come forward?
And if you will allow Ms. James to have her five minutes prior to asking the question, because she may be able to, similar to councillor Dotick, answer your questions prior to you asking, is that, are you okay to entertain Ms. James to speak for her five minutes and then ask a question?
That's entirely up to Ms. James.
All right. Ms. James, are you okay to do your opening, if that's all right?
I am well-prepared for any questions councillor Middleton Hope may have.
Do you want to open the with, do you want, do you have a presentation first?
To fire away and then we'll go from there.
All right. So we'll go that way. Go ahead, councillor Middleton Hope.
Okay. So Ms. James, what I'm looking for is clarification here because I've had a number of conversations with a number of folks with administration. I've had conversations with you. I want to be clear about what the ask is, how much the ask is, and what is it that we're asking for? In the report, we talk in terms of a patio as being an addition. We talk in terms of fencing. I find that ironic. We talk in terms of five more units and the cost of the five units at $35,000 a unit, that's $175,000. It's nowhere near $1,050,000. We talk about a pharmacy and we talk about pilings and the challenges that you're experiencing with the geotechnical survey that was done after the project was approved. We talked about also the challenges that you faced in terms of going back to the government of Alberta, who provided the $10.2 million to begin with. And the question would be, so why haven't you gone back to them again? So if you can take a stab at some of those, that might provide me with clarification.
Okay, so I'll start with a little bit of history, just because that was a lot of questions. So, so when we initially, when this project was initially announced under the previous provincial government, so under the NDP government, it was announced as a larger facility pre-COVID. It was announced as 42 units. It was announced pre-COVID, before costs went up. It was a contract that was given to an organization that was awarded to an architect and awarded to a builder back in, I'm going to say, 2018, 19. I'm not sure when the NDP left office. I can't remember. It was shortly after the Conservatives came in and they were re-elected in. So after that, it was a go. It was supposed to go. It was awarded. At that point, the project's numbers, the original announcement was 12.2, which included 42 units of supportive housing plus some stabilization beds that would be at the shelter. Due to the project not getting on its feet, the provincial government paid out the builder and paid out the architect at that point. So when the project kind of collapsed, almost for lack of a better term, they came to us with a grant funding agreement. This is how much we have left, which is the 10.2, which is what you're seeing. And can you, can you get 25 units for that dollar figure? So we met with an architect, our architect that we have now, and we mathed it, for lack of a better term. And we said, as a matter of fact, we think we can get 30. The grant funding agreement came to us, as you've seen, for 25 units for 10.226. With some fairly good math skills, I think I have, we were fairly confident on the 30 units. So we proceeded ahead with that and made that information to the ministry and told them we could get 30 units. As time progressed and the contract, so the design, we went through the design, we went through everything that we're going to do. And the contract was awarded, so to a construction manager, so a cost-plus basis. So as it was awarded to a construction manager, as a team, we sat down with the engineers and we asked, they asked for a copy of the geotech, which we requested from the government of Alberta, because keeping in mind this geotech and everything, the things were done previous to us being the CBO were done through the province of Alberta and somewhat through the city, but not, not really involvement from the city. So somebody probably in infrastructure. So we requested all of that data, plus we asked for an additional geotech to go deeper at that point because there were some questions around the information we received. We did a second geotech with second boreholes that went deeper. So I provided a copy from our engineer to Mr. Briarly, and I apologize that that didn't come to you before councillor Middleton Hope. I was hoping to get it to you two weeks ago, but I just got it yesterday at 4:00 PM. So when that happened, we knew that the pilings, we were told that the pilings, depending on where they tender in, will be between a half a million and a million dollars. So as quotes came in, they came in literally for between a half a million. So as quotes came in, they came in literally for between a half a million, high of a half a million to a million dollars. The construction manager chose the contractor, who is now at the lot now, to put in the pilings. So once we started to look at those additional things, it kind of made my good math for 30 units, bad math, because now my contingency is being eaten up. I had a contingency budget in place and that contingency was no longer, it's basically $600,000 less rich because I have needed these pilings. So what I'm coming to you with today is I'm coming to you with, the project is on budget. The project is on time. The project no longer has the contingency that it needs. I would appreciate council support in an up-to request of $35,000 a door. At this point today, if there's not one change order in this entire project, I will ask you for $6,000. And I likely will not ask you for $6,000. I'll pay for it myself and go have a nice day, so I don't have to come back. So that's where the project sits currently, councillor. But it's due to the fact that we just don't have a lot of wiggle room anymore for contingencies.
Yeah. So whatever contingency is basically gone. We've experienced this as a council before with other organizations. I get that. Okay. So when I'm looking at the documentation that has been provided to me, I'm looking at the pilings, I get that. Pilings make sense, okay? The pharmacy is a nice-to-have. The five additional units, that's scope creep. And I get that. You saw an opportunity and you took it. The fencing in the patio, you call it a deck, it looks like a patio on top of the building. So you're adding the fencing in the patio. Is there a number that you can come to us that is less than $1,050,000?
So, sorry.
Like 6,000 sounds good.
I didn't, yeah. Well, you know what? I sure the hell hope so, if I'm being honest. So the patio, the upstairs deck, where we're hoping, because what the idea behind that was, because we want to be a good neighbor and we want the people that are being served in that building to be up and above and not on that city sidewalk and not being exploited by, lack of a better term, predators that are looking to sell them drugs. This is a sober environment. This is a recovery-focused environment. We figured if we had them on the roof, that would be the best place for them. So specific to on price, on budget, everything, that includes a fence, that includes the patio, that includes everything, sir, with the exception of the commercial build-out, which will be a change order, which we understand is not applicable to this affordable housing grant, which we are not asking for.
Okay. So that was approximately $275,000 for the pharmacy?
We are assuming we're going to be somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 for the commercial build-out for the primary care.
Okay. So then my question again is, you've come here, the motion talks in terms of $1,050,000. What do you need?
Today, $6,000. Tomorrow, with a change order? I don't know. So that's why I specifically requested up to. I will provide all the data. I am very good at ensuring that my data is up to date. I have shared that information with Mr Matthews. I have everything on a spreadsheet. I will continue to share that with Mr Matthews, so that he is very, very aware. We will continue to report to the province monthly as we're required. We will report to the city. If we go over budget and we require any of your information or any of your funding, sorry, I apologize, if this motion is approved, if we require any of it, we will be very happy to be very transparent with Mr Matthews and his team to ensure you have all the data you need.
Last piece, if I might. Did you go to the government of Alberta?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to give the, I know that there's many of you that are in the audience would like to come up and speak to this, and I want to respect your time, as I'm sure many of you have left your place of work and hanging out, listening to councillor Middleton Hope all day is probably not what you, no, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. So I will open it up to, if there's any member of the public that would like to come up and speak, you please come forward to the mic and state your name, just for the record. If there's anybody that would like to speak to this, please come forward and speak. Thank you. And you can go to the podium over here, is fine. Thank you.
Dr Sharon Yanaki. I'm with the Social Health Equity Network, previously a member of SHEA, Social Housing in Action, was part of the group that was looking at the previous proposal. It was urgently needed then. It's even more urgently needed now. I think that having this, covering the contingency that's being requested is something that the city really needs to put dollars towards. I think it's just a critical move to have more social housing and supported social housing has been needed for five years. Thanks.
Thank you, doctor. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else from the gallery that'd like to speak to this?
Hi there. My name is Mitch Dibbin. I've worked in the social services world for the last 20 years in Lethbridge. And this type of project has been needed more than ever with our current state of affairs. I know that the design that is proposed is exactly what the type of clientele that we work with needs. For example, the connecting people with primary care, it is very challenging for someone who has a brain injury or is of transient nature to actually make it to those types of appointments. And so having something on site where people can access that is really important. Also, being on the north side of Lethbridge, there isn't a lot of medical type of facilities available, and so that's an added bonus. Speaking of the patio on top, I completely agree that having a safe place for people to hang out and socialize is a benefit for those people to stay safe and to have a place that they feel they belong and are welcome to. And so I just want to share that, and I would be in favor of the council approving the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Dibbin. Is there anybody else from the gallery? Sure. Come forward and state your, and the race is on. And state your name, because we don't know.
Here's my name. I'm here to support this building being built. Every day downtown, I see people who need somewhere to go for recovery, that need to get off the street and away from the problems. And we just can't get enough of this. I think 30 is just a start, in my opinion. So I just want to give my support to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Higgin.
Hello, council. My name is Kendall Hachakowski, and I'm a private developer and investor in downtown and around Lethbridge, and I'm here to speak in support. I'm also a recent addition to the LHA board, and I appreciate the facts that were outlined by councillor Dodick and by Robyn James. And there's two items that I wanted to highlight. One, as a private developer, I've been introduced to the project and gone through the expenses and the process and some of the unforeseen that can happen in construction. We've never had a project over budget. And I want to comment that I feel the expenses and the process are reasonable for what's being presented to you. And the second piece is probably more important, in that even as a private developer, we're obviously vested in our investments providing a return. But this is a key, key, key component of the housing continuum and one that the private market cannot serve and cannot support. And so your support as council to invest and shore up this critical piece of the housing continuum to ensure success at other levels, to ensure that people can get the support that they need, to ensure that they can then be moved up the ladder in society is of significant importance. So would definitely appreciate your support for this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch Hachakowski. Is there anybody else in the gallery that'd like to speak to this? Please come forward. Sounds like a public hearing, but.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Kelsey Deroch from Woods Homes, just here also in support of this motion. Working with youth in this community and very vulnerable youth, we often run into issues of not having safe places for them to move as they turn 18. The first step in ending homelessness is providing secure and safe housing for our young people and for our vulnerable people in the city. And this, as stated, 30 beds is just a start to this and would give a start for us to place youth so that they're not entering into long-term chronic homelessness.
Thank you very much, Ms Deroch. Is there anyone else from the gallery? Hello, Ms Amies. How are you?
Good afternoon, council. I'm fine, thank you. Sarah Amies is my name. I'm representing the downtown Lethbridge Business Revitalization Zone, and we did write a letter in support of Lethbridge Housing Authority being provided with the additional funding that they need. Because they are so far ahead with the funding, it seems such a shame to stop short at some really integral pieces of the whole design. And that is to maintain community relations with the individuals, families, businesses, et cetera, who will be living around that area. To be able to manage off-site management is so, so important. So the BRZ is in full support. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else from the gallery?
Cindy Bester, CEO, Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to talk about two of our policies that we have, economics of addiction and affordable housing. Both of these talk about community sustainability. I've shared information with council on this previously. So I think it's essential right now that we continue to support our community, support our housing authority, and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Bester.
Greg Schmidt. I'm with Family Ties Association, and we also provide supports for our homeless. You know, I was here way back when it was $11 million, and we're going to get this going. And I remember it was getting pushed through rather quickly because the election was coming, and then it never materialized. And so here we are, almost seven years later, and something is finally happening. It's unfortunate that, you know, circumstances are such, we don't have the $11 million, which puts things in jeopardy, but cost overruns are a factor of life. One of the things that I don't want to have happen is if this moves forward and we don't have the things that we need to make sure that it's a safe place, that it's taking care of the needs of the residents and is taking care of the needs of the community around them. So by making sure that some of these things are added on, the rooftop, the patio, it's not a luxury, it's more of a necessity, a need for the community and the residents that are going to be living there. So I would hate to be short on some of these things that are important, and then years later going, oh, it's just a problem. But if we could have alleviated it now, it would be a lot better. The grant money is there for a purpose. From my understanding, it meets all the requirements of the grant. So I would be in support of council moving this forward.
Thank you very much, Mr Schmidt. Is there anyone else from the gallery that'd like to speak to this? All right. I'll go back to questions from council. And councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. You don't have to come up, Ms Amies, just wanted to check. Have you ever heard of a band called The Chevilles? No. Just, we had a good chat about them earlier today. If I can, Mr Mayor, through you to city manager or designate, how long have we had this type of funding in place? When did council put the funding in place and put the parameters around it?
Thank you, acting mayor, councillor Carlson.
Deputy.
Deputy. Oh, man. Twice. All right. I'll try to get that right. You would wrote it down over here. My apologies. To deputy mayor Carlson. In regards to this, we've actually had this in place, at least the Affordable Housing Capital Grant. If I remember right, it came into play within the CIP, the $5 million. There's actually been capital funding for a long, long time inside of our operating budget that's also funded. So it's kind of a mixture between the two, the two streams. But the primary amount that we have that's not allocated right now is within the CIP. So it was approved back in 2021, I believe. Yes, 2021.
I think it was councillor Mia Shirro at the time, if I recall. And how many, how many applications have we had for these dollars? And the follow-up question to that is, how many have ever been refused and for what reason, if they meet all the requirements?
I will turn that over to Mr Pritchard or Mr Malcolm to come up and talk to us in regards to that.
Thank you for the question. For housing projects that have been before city council, we have the Green Acres Foundation, Abbey Road Terrace Project, the Aboriginal Housing Society Project. There was three projects that came forward during the Rapid Housing Initiative, being open for application, that were approved by city council that ultimately did not get funded by the federal government. So there's three there. Concept Investment Partners and Streets Alive Mission both came forward in October of last year. Prior to that, we had the Blackfoot Family Lodge Society, and then most recently, the YWCA Shelter Expansion Project. And so in total, that would be about approximately 10, none that I'm aware of that have not been approved for some type of funding, although there have been several amendments to the funding amounts along the way. That's council's prerogative.
Thank you. And maybe if you can, the reason that we've sort of settled on this $35,000 a door average is to sort of eliminate the council saying, well, you get 2,000, you get $160,000. It's sort of say, this is kind of the average that we can fund. Is that correct?
Yeah. At one point in time, during one of those requests of city council, the question was asked, what was the average funding amount to date at that point in time? And at that point, it was just over 34, between 34, $35,000 per unit. I think the other piece for us to keep in mind is just though that there's a lot of context with any and all of these projects. Some of them are adaptive reuse projects. Some of them are supportive housing versus just affordable housing. There's a wide range of the type of project that happens, and so there's not necessarily one true correct dollar figure. That was just the average to date that had been funded when that question was asked. And it sort of set a precedent from that point forward amongst council.
Thank you for that. And I may have other questions, Mr Mayor, but I'll hop out for now. Thank you.
Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. And through you to Mr Matthews, we are currently reviewing our grant and our processes, so we don't have the current policies and documents in place. So I just need to confirm with you that you have the mechanisms in place to, if this is approved, to ensure that we have proper reporting and oversight of any money that goes out in the interim.
Thank you, councillor Carlson. I'm having a really a day today. I am having a bad day today. Yeah, councillor Carlson. Councillor Carlson, yes, we do. Each one of these has a contribution agreement that defines it, and inside of that, as Ms James had noted, would include actually the eligible and the ineligible components of those. So we monitor that. And of course, there's also requirements like audited financial statements on the project and all that kind of stuff that would come out in the end. So there is a process in place, and of course, that's the same, similar process that we've done for all these agencies that have gone on.
And we have done some others even during this interim process as the grant is being reviewed.
That is correct.
Well, I knew the answer. I just wanted it on record. Thank you very much, Mr Matthews.
Thank you. Councillor Middleton Hope.
Thank you. So this question will be to, I guess to Mr Matthews. The $35,000 per unit, it bugs me, because we're not asking for $35,000 per unit here, because that would only be $175,000. So I need some clarity on this, so that we understand 100% clear what we're asking for, what the money is going to be spent on. The second question that I have is in regards to the $1,050,000. We've had 2.72,714,137 in that account. How long has it been there? Can we afford to tie up $1,050,000 for between 18 and 24 months while this project is being built? And if we can, I'm great with it. Just let me know.
And I'll try to get this right. Thank you, councillor Middleton Hope.
Sure.
There we go. It's been one of those days. It's been one of those days. So to answer a couple of your questions along the way here, first, I'll start off with the $2.7 million that's remaining inside of there. So the $2.7 million, that's the remaining amount, and that $5 million after some of those other, well, what Council's approved to date, but actually going through, is probably an easier way to say. To your point, and can we afford to tie up $1,050,000 inside of that, that really comes down to a Council decision point. It's very similar to what we see in the Major Event Hosting Grant, the last time round with Scotty's Tournament of Hearts, compared to us using that funding for the exhibition. I.e., once you've allocated and committed it, it diminishes it for anything else. That's something that Council will have to consider. There is other funding components that would still be available for this, but we would have a commitment of $1,050,000 if Council approves this.
Just, just so that we can clear things up, because it makes it sound like I'm being Ebenezer Scrooge here. At the end of the day, the $1,050,000, so you're saying we can actually afford, that means that we can tie this money up for 18 to 24 months while this project is being developed. Is that dependent on what our historical demands on this fund are and our projected demands on this fund are?
So I think, you know, that's some of that information I would need Mr. Malcolm and Mr. Pritchard to talk about, you know, of any future components. But the reality is, is that this is very similar to, you know, I think that Mr. Malcolm had answered this question, a similar question before, in the sense that we never know what's coming into the pipeline. And it's the same thing with the Major Event Hosting Grant. That's the reason why it's always so difficult on that. We only know what's before us, we don't know what's coming, coming in, i.e. the bird in hand of the components. So, i.e., we have the funding available for this one. Whether or not another one's coming through, coming down the pipe, and whether or not you even successfully get to it, we don't know. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Malcolm, he might be able to give you a better answer in that regard.
I don't know if I'm going to say too much different. I think we have no, well, I should say, we do have an ability to say what our rate of expenditure or uptake has been, but we are entering a realm that has been no, not like the future, the past, I should say. We have efforts with a dedicated position, who is working with other levels of government to try to leverage those dollars. And we have a housing crisis that just gets, seems to get worse every day. So the demand is going to continue to go up. So the past rate of expenditure probably does not in any way reflect what's coming in the future. Further, while we do have projects that we are actively engaged with, there's no guarantee that any of them will come to fruition, because many of them will require other levels of government funding, which takes a long time to put in place. So I believe what I said in the last meeting will hold true here, is we would like to encourage, and why we're bringing this forward, is because it is probably our recommendation that you fund what's in front of you and get units that are at the tip, or the shovel is in the ground in already, finished. And then we turn our attention to those that are, we're working on.
I'm not sure if I answered all your questions, Counsel Middleton Hope or not.
No, but you know, I'm just going to have to live with it, because I'm being asked here to agree with my Council colleagues on funding $1,050,000 for this project, whether we use all the money or not. I get it. It's tying up this money for 18 to 24 months. I'm being told that we can do that, we can afford it.
Yes, there's funds of risk.
I'm talking about the risk. We can afford the risk. I would be a lot happier if Ms. James came back and said, we only need $50,000, but I get that, Ms. James. You don't know what the contingencies are going to look like.
So I'm looking at Ms. James, she might want to provide that, but I think what my understanding is here, and then Ms. James can correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that currently what Ms. James is referring to and what the discussion was, is that there's $6,000 over budget at this standpoint. You know, LHA doesn't know at this stage here what it's going to look like as they go through. This is a contingency amount we're up to. So I think, if I'm getting the head nod right, that the LHA would be agreeable to a lower amount if, on that, my setting that. But I will let Ms. James come up and speak to that, because I may have misunderstood the head nod wrong.
No, thank you, you're right. What I would love, nothing more than, is to come forward to you in 79 weeks and say, guess what? You don't owe me anything, or I don't owe you anything, or we are peace out, I don't have to come back here anymore. I would love to have that conversation with you so much, it would be so satisfying. But we're not there yet. So I'm asking for a contingency. It's 9%. It's not unusual. A lot of projects this size do carry about a 10%. I did look at kind of what you've already funded with other contingencies, Counsel Middleton Hope, you guys, those who disclose contingencies disclose between 10 and 15%. This is 9%. So I'm not asking for the world, and my greatest hope is to come here and say to you, sir, we are on time, we are on budget, and I use my own $6,000. So let's hope we can have that conversation.
All right, Counsel Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hagan. Through you to the City Manager or designate, confirming, LHA has not received any funding out of this grant in the past. Is that correct?
I will get either Mr. Malcolm or Mr. Pritchard to answer that for you, Counsel Schmidt Rempel.
And my apologies, we were going in a bit of an aside conversation. Could I have you repeat the question, please?
Just wanting to confirm that LHA has not received funding out of this grant in the past.
Correct. LHA has not received any funding for this project or previous projects from the Affordable and Social Housing Capital Fund.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I see no further questions, and I want to thank my colleagues for the questions, as well as the gallery and those that have come forward and taken the time out of your day to offer your support for the project. With that, I'd like to have Counselor Dodek, please open up his debate.
I'll be brief. On February 7, 2023, we had the Blackfoot Family Lodge, the Blood Tribe Housing, My City, Care Lethbridge, come to Council asking for funding. And that totaled $4,970,240. And that was on the usual conditional upon getting provincial or federal government money or any, whether it be totally from the feds, totally from the province, in any combination. And we approved that. So that would have taken care of all of the money that we had in that grant, and it would have been held up had the feds or the provinces approved any or those projects. We didn't. But that's what the money is there for. If Lethbridge Housing Authority, as set out in their report, or the report that was provided to the Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee Report on May 7, 2024, showing a budget of $11,276,000, and indicating that 9% of the total cost would be the contingency, which is the $1,050,000. If they would have come to us and said, hey, City Council, would you give us, we've got 30 units, we'd like to fund $35,000 a unit for a total of $1,050,000, conditional on getting $10,226 million from the province, we would have jumped at it and said, of course we're going to do that. It was done the reverse in this particular case. They got the money from the province, and kudos to them for that, you know, to get the province to fund the money first is something that warms the cockles of my heart. This is not an unreasonable ask. As the resolution says, it's up to $1,050,000. And yes, it does tie it up for a while. We will still have $1.7 million left from the $2.7 million with respect to projects that may be coming down the pike, projects that we don't even know about. This is a good project, it's well on its way to getting started. We've heard from various organizations that it's a necessary project, and I know, Council knows that it's a good and necessary project. I would ask for Council's support.
Counsel Carlson.
Thank you. We created this fund for the purpose of supporting housing. That is what it is there for, and we have a project in front of us around supportive housing. When we created the housing strategy, we understood completely that supportive housing is one of the greatest needs, and it is one of the areas that has to be done by government. It's not something that private developers are going to do. It is essential because it will serve some of the most difficult to serve, and will help people who have been unhoused for quite a bit of time. So we know that what we are looking at here is essential. We also know that what we do and how we approach housing is being watched. When there are funders coming forward, they want to be able to see communities that can and do get things built to work with for future developments. So how we actually approach this is something that will determine whether other groups want to work with us in the past. So I will absolutely support this, because it's getting the housing that we need, and it does show that we are a community that supports housing, wants housing, needs housing, and knows how to get housing built. And I hope my colleagues will support this as well.
Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just remember being elected in whenever it was, a few years ago. Just, I mean, and we were in the middle of a crisis, housing crisis, drug crisis, all that. And it was always, what are we going to do about this? You know, intake, detox center, affordable housing, supportive housing. Those were all of the things that were in front of the mind. Finally, this came before us, and then, you know, things happened, and the $13 million that was allotted, it went away. And now we have before us something that is absolutely vital to our city, and to Ms. James, who has gone out and done such a great job of getting this money, and as she has pointed out, I know that there's going to be some issues going forward. I'm going to ask for it now, so that I don't come back in four years and say I need another 1.2 million, which is not, hopefully not going to happen. But the money is there now. She's got the money, supported money. It's, to me, this is just a no-brainer, this is a win-win. I will totally support the resolution. I'm Counsel Dodek.
Counsel Matthews, I was going to say. Counsel Matthews, I have the same issue today, but boy, that's really going on there. Mr. Matthews and I. All right, Counsel Middleton Hope.
Thank you. And Ms. James, you've done a superlative job this afternoon. I came in here thinking in terms of, not a chance. You now have my support. Thank you.
Oh, no, from the gallery, we need to keep some decorum there. Thank you. Some decorum. Counsel Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We've heard that we've granted other organizations and have granted some of those program funds, even with the grant being paused and without additional information. We've put LHA through a lot of requests for additional information on this project. We know that this is important in the housing continuum and to our community. Lethbridge Housing Authority hasn't seen funding from this grant in the past. We've heard that this is up to $1 million in amounts for contingencies. At this time, we're not participating in this project, and that sends a strong message to the province and federal governments. And if we've heard anything from those two bodies, it's that they want us to be active participants in affordable and permanent supportive housing project. This is a need in our community, and I will again be supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I too will be supporting this project. I know, I sat on the Board of Lethbridge Housing for, I think, about nine years. I won't ask Counsel Campbell, because he doesn't remember times. But during that time, with Lethbridge Housing, and as well as Lethbridge and Region Community Housing, there's over 800 affordable units, I need a nod if that's correct, over 800 affordable units that, throughout our community, that Lethbridge Housing and Lethbridge and Region Community Housing operate. And you can just imagine the amount of folks within our community that are housed because of this organization. So I want to give a shout out to that, and it's something a lot of people don't know. And they could be next door to you, I know the work that they do, they're always, the lawns are upkept, and so you wouldn't, you may not even know if you have one of these units that are right next to your home. So the work that is done is absolutely amazing, and I know since becoming the CBO, one of the things I would like to ask, and this could be at a future, and if you reach out to our City Clerk's Department, is come give us these updates, because I know this is something, it's a great news story, and to share with us the great work that is being done. I also again want to thank the community members that come forward and are in support, because as we work collaboratively on these initiatives, it's the way that we're going to be able to help those that are struggling most in our community, especially when it comes to the permanent supportive housing, as well as any other, any other project that we have. Working together, we will, we will get stuff done. I'll put it that. So thank you very much for the work that you do, and I absolutely will be supporting this. Counsel Carlson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, everyone who came today, Ms. James as well. And thank you to my colleagues for the great questions. I missed the first part of the discussion around this at the Economic and Finance. So this was a great refresher for me of the discussion. I just want to put a plug in for whoever's on the next council, that when we built the CIP four-ish years ago, and Counselor Meashiro at that time said, I want $5 million for affordable housing, we all approved it, because we didn't really think there was going to be a whole lot of applications coming forward, and we didn't realize the impact it would have. I appreciate the impact that was demonstrated by Mr. Malcolm, Mr. Pritchard, and their team, that we've had in this community. So these are a great discussion and debate to have. I hope future councils are as forward-thinking as this council and past councils have been, because we need these kind of impacts in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. And to close, Counsel Dodek.
Call the question.
Question has been called, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And before we take a quick, a quick break, I'd just like to have Council, no, we have 9.1 that needs to be withdrawn, because it's obviously there from previously. So if we can just have, by consent, is there any concern with the withdrawal of that? If not, okay. We will have that withdrawn. Thank you. And we'll go for a break for, 10 minutes? 15 minutes?
A minute left, and I want to surprise Counselor Croson. We will go down to an administration. Let me just see, an administration submission, as you've seen in your agenda, the operating budget amendment for a purchase of a fire engine, 10.1. I do have a question on that, Mr. Matthews. Not just the cost, because of course, you're looking at a million, what was the number here?
Million and fifty thousand.
What's it, a million, three? Sorry, it's not right in front of you. Somebody have the number. Anyways, over a million dollars. Oh, Mr. Matthews, go ahead.
Yeah, it's one million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred, though it would come from the fleet reserve.
Okay, so, so the reason for this now, first off, and just, this is just for, obviously, public to know, for the four people that are watching, that the dollars for that, that is a procurement's gone out, this is a price that, that our fire engines are worth nowadays. So, and the second part of that question is, it's moved forward for the reason, and I know that you've already spoken to me about this, but just for the community to know, that it does take up to how long from the time of, of order to have delivery of this unit?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel. Mayor Higgin. I'm going to do this all day, I know. What's going on? Anyways, um, thank you, Mayor Higgin. Yes, actually, fifty-four months is the timeframe now, uh, lead times. Uh, I was just talking to, um, our manager of fleet services, and also one of the deputy chiefs that's here in the audience as well, too. And so we're seeing long components inside of, of our lead times in regards for fire trucks, um, as well as ambulances. Uh, so this type of equipment is not something you can just go onto a dealership and, and purchase. We go, uh, we go through a whole procurement piece, they are built, um, for us, and I think I'll make sure I don't get this wrong as I look at them. It's built to spec as we need, and so forth, on it. So there is specific components. Uh, because of that, long lead time, too, on the savings, um, there's a couple different pieces on it. One is that this unit, um, you know, is quoted a price of one point, you know, is one point eight million, this is roughly inside of, uh, the actual document here. But we have savings of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, um, on this, and prepayment discounts, um, as well, which are coming into, that's coming down to the net piece. Through, through cooperative purchasing and other, and other components. So the reality is, is that this is, um, something we need to do, and we need to make sure that it's there, so it's available on time and schedule. And then so, although it's not approved inside of the current operating budget, we have the funding. And what we're seeking really right now is the approval from council under the MGA, for us to go out and buy this, because it's not within the budget as of today.
Thank you, and, and I just do want to touch base on that, uh, cooperative purchasing. So this is economies of scale, of course, something that our city manager has brought forward before and was able to, you probably answered this one anyways, Aziz. So as far as purchasing together with others to be able to, to lower that cost, is that fair to say?
That is fair to say. So it, um, cooperative purchasing, um, is a, is allowable under the, it basically gets all the tenderings done by other groups. And so all that process gone through, and we're allowed to under the government, or under the trade agreements, to utilize that. And we get, um, better pricing through that. And we see some significant savings in pricing going that route.
Okay, and, and next, I guess, is, is a huge call out to anybody else if they want to get into business building fire engines, as well as, uh, uh, ambulances. I think that's the business to get into now by the sounds of it, so, thank you very much for that. Uh, Counselor Middleton-Hope?
And mobile fire stations. Um, just a couple of questions, and I'm not sure, Mr. Matthews, whether you can answer these, or perhaps the deputy chief might be able to. And thank you for the, the submission, fifty-four months, we understand that, one point four two six million dollars for fire truck number six, pumper number six. As a part of this submission, I see that there's also, I believe, it's pumper number four is going to require, uh, a, uh, replacement at some point. We don't have six fire halls. This is pumper number six. Can you explain how pumper number six, uh, is, we are, we are requesting funding for pumper number six? Did I get the numbers wrong? Because I'm getting lots of strange looks at the back.
Yeah, the pumper number, uh, so there was pumper number one, two, three, four, five. Uh, one went up before, so now we have two, three, four, five, six, so there's still five pumbers in the, in the fleet.
Two, three, four, five, six?
Six, yeah.
Okay, so this is pumper number six?
Yeah.
But it doesn't designate a new fire hall?
No, it doesn't.
Got it, okay, that makes good sense then. Uh, cooperative purchasing, don't go anywhere. Cooperative purchasing will save about three hundred and, almost three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Good on us. Mr. Matthews, or, um, and I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
Mr. Aldrich.
Aldrich?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're with the fire department?
Nope, with fleet services.
So what are you, cozying up to the deputy chief back there? Holy smokes, I got it. It was good, good, good business. Well, well done, deputy chief. The fleet reserve, uh, I take it, Mr. Matthews, the fleet reserve can absorb the expenditure of one point four two six million dollars for this unit? We're paying for it now, I presume, in increments upfront? And through the course of the next fifty-four months?
Yeah, so we, we charge the department a rate, an ongoing rate.
Yeah, I know how you do that.
Yeah, so, with that rate, that rate continues to go in and builds the funds towards the replacement, so that rate will continue to go into the fleet reserve.
Okay, so, this would be a fleet question then. Are there other units for other departments that will not get purchased? Because we need to purchase this fire engine now?
Nope.
And pay for it now?
Nope, we, uh, this is basically just, the funding is available, we're just requesting to purchase it earlier due to the long lead time.
Sure, sure, got it. Thank you, perfect.
And we have no further questions on that, so I do have a resolution from Counselor Middleton-Hope. Operating budget amendment for purchase of fire engine 10.1. Be it resolved, the city council approved the amendment of the 2023 to 2026 operating budget to include the purchase of fire engine number six from the fleet reserve in the amount of one, one million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Counselor Middleton-Hope, to open debate.
Thank you. My colleagues have heard the questions, if they were listening, to, uh, the members of, of our administration. And, uh, I think it's provided with, uh, pretty much a fulsome, uh, response as to why we need to do it now, what we're going to save as a result of it, and the lack of impact, which I think is important, on, uh, on purchasing other vehicles for other areas of corporations. So I would then ask for my colleagues' support. That's it.
Thank you. With that, questions have been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. All right, next we'll move to administrative inquiries and responses. Uh, everyone from Counselors Schmidt-Rempel, a second response regarding microgeneration, and from Counselor Croson, and Counselor Schmidt-Rempel regarding, uh, industrial land attraction plan. Is there any questions on that, Counselor Croson?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to be bringing forward another inquiry, because as during, as per our process, I can make it verbal and then follow up with the writing. So I will let Counselor Schmidt-Rempel, um, speak first, because she's going to be speaking, I believe, about the ones currently, and then I have a new one.
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. So just in regards to the microgeneration one, I just had a couple of follow-up questions on that. And I guess I can direct those to you, Mr. Sanchez. Okay, um, just confirming then, are there any changes needed to the CEIP bylaw to see further expanded, expansion in the opportunity, beyond what it currently has capacity for?
Sorry, can you repeat the question again, changes to?
Yeah, do we need any changes to the CEIP bylaw? To see further expansion into the opportunity? Like, are we maxed out on that CEIP bylaw? Do we need to create another one? Or does that cover all industrial and commercial microgeneration under it?
Mr. Matthews?
So, um, just for clarification here, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel, I presume what you're referring to is the Clean Energy Improvement Program? Um, so, I'm not sure if that helps you, Mr. Sanchez, on that, but I don't know if there's any changes there. I'll pass it back to you.
Yes, thanks for the clarification. I was trying to find in my mind the definition of what we were talking about, but no, there is no changes, because this is regarding processes in order to be more effective and more efficient when we process the, this type of application, but it has nothing to do with the bylaw. The bylaw is what we have in place in terms of funding that is available. And we're just trying to expedite a process in order to process new, uh, solar applications within, uh, the electric department.
Okay, and then, um, further to that, is there any need for an advocacy plan, um, in an effort to expand potential future investment in microgeneration?
So, short answer to that is, we are currently working with, um, community stakeholders in the solar industry in terms of the capacity that we have. When it goes to do some, uh, law into the provinces, it, it is in terms of the microgeneration, uh, rule that we have in place. And I know the province is currently working with that. Uh, Mr. Drenth, who is the GM of the electric, uh, department, is part of the working group that is working with Minister Nudorf in all the regulations and the changes, so he is heavily involved in this. And we will continue to, to be par in the table and to bring those recommendations to council, or anything else that is needed in order to continue to move forward again on this.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, um, did you, Counselor Croson, did you have any questions on the industrial land attraction plan? Okay, um, I do have a couple of questions, um, on that. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I believe Ms. Slovak would answer the questions on this one. Okay, um, so when we're looking at this, uh, we're talking about industrial land, and we're talking about it as a whole. We haven't separated out our heavy industrial or our commercial in this area. So could we separate that out a little bit, in where do we stand insofar as heavy industrial land?
I'd have to pull those numbers really quickly for you. Um, we presented the most recent ones when we did our Opportunity Lethbridge annual report, um, about a month or so ago. Uh, but I could quickly pull those for you. No, I mean, it was a public report. It broke down, um, in the report, sorry, just give me one moment. Um, we did break down, uh, at the end of the year for 2023, what we had left for, um, our breakdown was heavy industrial, uh, general industrial, and business industrial, um, within the sharing business and industrial park.
So if, I was going to say, if you wanted to include that as a further follow-up at the next council meeting to this inquiry, if we could get that breakdown on this inquiry sheet as well, that would be great. And that's it.
And I'd like to add to that, if I could, uh, Mr. City Manager, and I, because I'm sure you don't have it now, but if this could be added as well, comparatives. So when I look at the percentage that we have within our community of commercial and industrial land, and compare it to other communities relative to our size, if we can find out, are we lagging behind? Are we doing land banking? Are we, uh, doing what we need to do to have this industrial land in the future? Because I've, I've heard that we are not, but I would like to make sure that I'm wrong about that, and that we do have, uh, land available for, uh, commercial and industrial going into the future as far as land banking. So it doesn't have to be answered today, unless you have something, if not, if that can be combined, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, I can speak to sharing industrial park specifically. I think, uh, we would look to our colleagues in planning and design to speak more to the community as a whole for how much industrial, um, land we would have. I just have the numbers right now, so at the end of the year for 2023, in sharing business and industrial park, we had a hundred and fifty-eight acres remaining of heavy industrial, forty-five acres of general industrial, and five acres of business industrial.
Five?
Five. No, uh, so, five acres of business industrial, forty-five acres of general industrial, and a hundred and fifty-eight acres of heavy industrial.
And then I think it goes?
And then, yeah, if we can find out how this is compared, and again, I don't need it now, but if, if we can look, because I know that's something you'd probably have to do some, some work on, but?
It'd be important to keep in mind, um, other, uh, industrial developments. So you've got the WT Hill area, uh, where there would be land, uh, there's also additional land that's not within sharing on the north side as well, so.
General, within, within this, within city, city, uh, boundaries, it was a question that came up at a, a, a mid-city mayor's meeting, and, and people were asking about, you know, what the comparatives are, or like, do you have a lot of land? What is the amount of land you have for, for heavy industrial throughout, within the borders of, of Lethbridge? Because it's something that, um, I think we all need to be cognizant of, is that we want to have the land available if someone comes knocking on the door, and not that go to another jurisdiction. So just to make sure that we've got that land available, if we can find that out. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, based on the complexity of the inquiry, I would suggest this is probably more of a report that would come back to assets and infrastructure committee. Want staff to have had the opportunity to complete it, because there's a number of factors that need to be analyzed and understood. And some of it, for strategic planning, might even be confidential to the city. So I think a report is probably a better for that approach.
So just, do you want me to follow up, obviously similar to that of what Counselor Croson said verbally, but I'll follow up with the written as far as those, those questions? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Croson, sorry?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So, Mr. Sanchez, normally when we write these inquiries, you know, we have to do them at least two weeks in advance so that we can get them onto Agenda Review, et cetera. But over the weekend, and you know, we've been all watching what's been happening in Calgary, and needless to say, we've been, been getting lots of questions. So I thought I'd pose them to you verbally, and then I can follow up with a written one. If you have answers today, because you may just know some of these things, or if not, we can wait for two weeks. But people are having the same questions as I'm sure many people in Calgary are. How many pipelines come off of our water treatment plant? How often do we check our lines? Now, how assured are we that we're not going to have something similar happen here, as they're seeing in Calgary? How many reservoirs do we have, et cetera? And how prepared are we for a water emergency such as we're seeing in Calgary?
Just thanks for the question, and, and I think I, we will come back with more details. I have some, uh, information that I can share today. No different than the city of Calgary, and I know even that particular one recently had an inspection done a few years back. Uh, we do the same, we have an inspection program on these lines, and there is actually a CIP, a line item in the current approved CIP that I believe is for 2027, where we are doing, uh, it's called if, the tweening of one of the lines. There is one line that leave the plant, the main line, and then split and branch over to the reservoirs. And there, we are currently working on tweening one of those lines, precisely to have redundancy and have that capacity to react and do some preventative maintenance. But I also know that the team is currently working on the underground master plan that is incorporating what is next. And all the, the different inspections that we do, there are different technologies like CCTV. And we always try to be proactive, but with the caveat that even if you do an inspection today, there could be something that happens next week, depending on the winter conditions, thaw, uh, how hot it is, that can cause the pipe to fail at any given time. And we are just trying to see, uh, being conscious in terms of the infrastructure that we have, and how much do we need to have in place in order to have redundancy in case we need that.
And just in general terms, a lot of the roadwork we do, especially downtown, people think of as roadwork, but it's actually infrastructure work on a lot of our water. And so we are proactively working on all of this through different processes.
That's correct, and we have, uh, the, the network is mapped out, and we know when, when there is redundancy and we have assets, that's where we actually go and run then to fail, because we have a redundancy. And in that way, we can also be cost, thinking about the cost of, of life cycle and when do we do it. Uh, but, uh, we definitely, most of the work that you see in downtown that is happening during the summertime, is doing that preventative maintenance in order to avoid these type of failures that can happen at any time, but we're trying to do the diligence.
And last question, and this is why we have such a high priority for water and wastewater programs, projects on our list for CIP.
That's correct, and that's also really tied with the asset management programs that we have in place. And that's one of the areas where we started doing asset management back in 2006. So we have a, I will say, a really good plan, can always be improved like anything else. And we are working currently with Mr. Matthews' team in order to, to come back with future, uh, asset management plans, updates.
Thank you, I will formalize this, like I said, in writing, but I think you've made a lot of people in the community a lot happier with those answers. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you very much, Counselor Croson. Next I have a, uh, update, and I want, Mr. City Manager, if you can speak to this. Uh, last year, a resolution was brought forward, I think it was Counselor Dodick brought forward last year about, uh, taxes and, and parking in front of City Hall during that time. And I, I don't see him there now. I know that he just came in from, from paying his taxes out there, so maybe he's been back out to complain or something? But, uh, maybe he didn't pay enough. But, uh, could you maybe speak to, to that, and, and that you will be doing some, uh, marketing, or, or I guess, doing some comms on that for those folks that want to come in and pay their taxes?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Dodick can smack me if I get it wrong when he gets back. But, but historically, the last year, Counselor Dodick started a couple of years ago, uh, it's within my ability to approve. But, uh, for public awareness, that, uh, parking in front of City Hall, the last week in front of City Hall, keyword, uh, in front of City Hall is, uh, free the last week for people that want to come in to pay their taxes in person, so.
And that will be done the, the last week in, okay?
And consistent with that, I haven't spoken to comms, but usually we, uh, put some information out that, I see Mr. Sanchez saying yes, so, that we'll put information out to the public, so they're aware that that's in place.
And I see comms with a thumbs up back there, too, so that's good. All right, Counsel, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
So just in regards to other council updates, uh, Counselor Palladino and I had the Lethbridge Police Commission meeting on May 31st. Highlights from that meeting included, on May 29th, members of the Traffic Response Unit, who were trained in childcare, car seat safety, held a, uh, car seat check stop. They were able to provide, um, information, check and ensure child document restraints were properly installed, and they answered questions, um, about installation and provided advice. The second installment in the targeted enforcement project downtown took place in April and resulted in numerous arrests. AHS has expanded the virtual opioid dependency program hours. Paramedics will now be staffed in the short-term holding facility from 6:00 AM to midnight, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Previous hours were 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Uh, property crimes, crime suppression team and high-risk offenders units were directly associated to, uh, the arrests of 11 subjects. Which resulted in seventeen criminal charges and the execution of 12 warrants. The recruiting unit? Execution of 12, no, 12 warrants. Um, their recruiting unit continues to process applications for the July 2024 cadet class. Eight individuals have already been offered employment, and a further eight are still being processed for potential inclusion in the class. LPS also welcomed Cruiser, a four-year-old black lab. Um, this is the service's second facility dog, and will serve to provide assistance for victims and witnesses of crime or tragedy during police interviews, court testimony, and other situations where his calm and grounding presence may be helpful. And, um, members of the commission were invited to attend the inaugural Urban Crime Conference in Lethbridge from September 23rd to 25th. This invitation was also extended to members of Lethbridge City Council. And, uh, last week, the city manager and I attended the team Leth, or actually, two weeks ago, the city manager and I attended the Team Lethbridge Planning Meeting for the Snowmavericks Mission. Eighteen organizations are registered to participate in the mission. At the meeting, we worked on reviewing and revising top capital project priorities, top operating funding priorities, top policy priorities, as well as other priority issues for the community. More information on this will be coming to this month's governance meeting on June 27th.
Thank you very much. And, uh, with that, were you out paying your taxes, Counselor Dodick? You did, all right. That's good. All right, with that, we will have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Croson?
Mine is actually, um, a request to add something to the agenda. So when you're done with this part of the agenda, that's before we go into closed.
All right, and we, before we go into closed, uh, add the item, Counselor Croson?
I'm assuming it'd be enclosed, um, Madam City Clerk, it'd be a closed item, and it's simply on the Son-Lauron exchange.
Son-Lauron exchange, all right, we will add that. Any concern? Not, we will have that on there, thank you very much. And with that, can I have a motion to go in closed?
Sure, I'll do that, too.
Thank you, Counselor Croson, all in favor? All right. All right.
All right, I have a resolution from Councilor Parker, closed meeting, land matter 14.1 be resolved at City Council Director, closed meeting discussion with respect to the land matter verbal remain confidential pursuant to section 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act. Councilor Parker, question been called, all in favor?
It passes unanimously and I have one resolution from Councilor Carlson, closed meeting Soler on Exchange 14.2 be resolved at City Council Director, closed meeting discussion with respect to the Soler on Exchange remain confidential pursuant to section 17 harmful to personal privacy. 21 harmful to intergovernmental relations and 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act further be resolved at City Council move the time of the July 11th 2024 meeting of the Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee to 11:00 a.m. Councilor Carlson?
La question.
Question's been called, all in favor?
Can I ask the question?
Oh, you do have a question before we go ahead, Councilor Carlson.
Was anything that we discussed needed to remain confidential?
Just the items in the agenda at this point.
Okay.
And then?
The names, we had names.
Okay. All right, and with that, oh, sorry, the vote, all in favor? And that's unanimous, and with that, we are adjourned, thank you.